Good evening, welcome to the SCOR meeting, it's Monday, January 11th, 20.1, 6 o'clock. When Susan Tolly lives at Boardroom at 1887 Building. Call the meeting to order it and ask Mr. Tolly.
This is Fisher.
Yeah.
Mr. Gayhart.
Here.
Mrs. Ingersoll.
Here.
Mr. Martel.
Here.
Mr. O'Donnell.
Here.
Mrs. Ray.
Here.
Mr. Scaro.
Here.
Ms. Gropowski.
Here.
And Mr. Reed will be joining us later.
We do have a forum that will continue, and it will note this meeting has been noted by state statutes. Do we have any community participation?
I do not have any community participation already yet. I don't believe there's any online.
Nobody here, Martin?
Nobody cares.
Alright, well, just press the reading that and go to the options charter school student presentation.
Right. Tricia. Or.
Chandler.
Chandler, okay.
Yep.
And let me go back to the event and pull up. Then Chandler, we won't be able to see you, but we'll have the presentation up, and I think you can see it. Just to let you know. We'll find out when we're ready for it when you want me to.
Okay, thank you.
Alright, hold on a minute. There you go. Alright, whenever you're ready, thank you for coming.
Yeah, so I'm Chandler Kazer, I'm the school counselor at Options Virtual Charter School for six through 12. Before I start, I just want to say thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak in front of all of you about the work that we've been doing at Options in trimester one. So. This is just a brief overview of kinda how trimester one went. So. I just want to touch on academics, how we support our learners through academics, through career, and through social and emotional learning. So in academics, we use Apex Learning. It's a online software that our students use, and it lets them work at a self-paced role to an extent, and although it's online, we get, we as a staff understand that online can be difficult, so we try our hardest to schedule as many in-person study sessions as possible that we host at the 1887 Building through Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday. That will be continuing for one more month until we move into our new building, which we're really excited about. We also have, we connect with our students through Google Hangouts, even if we can't connect with them at the 1887 Building. And then I just briefly want to talk about our Blended Thursdays, so Mr. Talak, if you could just go to the next slide quickly, yeah. So. This is what we're kind of offering for Thursday, so we have some blended learning, so we're not strictly online, and so our middle school students and our high school students get an opportunity to come in for about three hours. This will be starting in our new building. And what we'll be doing is we'll be offering them an opportunity to do some art, some PE, and any exploratory class that we're offering as well. You can go to the next slide, thank you, and then so in regards to our supporting learning for careers, we use Zello, which is consistent with what the high school uses. And it's an opportunity for our students to do some career planning along with exploring other colleges and universities as well. And another way we prepare our students for college is we kinda connect with Gateway. Gateway has this chance grant that has allowed some of our students to participate at the school, so we have one student in culinary, two in criminal justice, and one in welding. So for the remainder of the presentation that I have, I just kinda wanna talk about what we've been doing in trimester one for our social and emotional learning for our high school students. We understand that online can be a difficult time for our students to connect with others, and we took that as a priority this trimester. And so. The remainder of the presentation, I'm gonna kinda cover the Dessa, the peer-to-peer grant, wellness badge activities, and win at Options, so in our next slide. We were kinda curious, what are was there a need at all in SEL for our students? We didn't want to just reach, we didn't want to present, or we didn't want to go into giving activities for our students to participate in if we didn't think there was a need, and so at the next slide. As I said, we do our, we've been doing our study sessions Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday in the 1887 Building. And this is a time when I got to connect with Rita Galphus. She's been very helpful for me towards this SEL project, and I got to work with her a little bit, and she introduced me to the Dessa. So the Dessa is, it's an SEL software program used to screen and assess and strengthen social emotional competency for our youth, K through 12. And we really liked this because it is aligned with Castle. And includes a lot of evidence-based SEL assessments, it's a universal screener, and it's foundational practices and growth strategies to strengthen SEL competency, so we really liked that one, and that was the one we decided to do for this project. We started this in the middle of October, and I was able to lead this this project, I had a really great team, and I think the reason we were so successful is the group members we had in our team. Sarah Stone was a co-leader, and she was someone who I got to consult with and collaborate with throughout the entire process. Randy Dricken, he was very helpful because the Dessa is an online assessment, and he took our high school students from Skyward, and he exported it into the Dessa software for us. Chris Colosimo, he got, he's a school psych at the high school, he he kinda wanted to be part of the project as well, because if it he really wanted to be part of it because he would, if it went well, he wanted to pride at the high school and the middle school level. And then again, Rita was a consultant, but she is more than a consultant throughout the process. So for students to participate in this Dessa needs assessment, they just had to go to ascend, and they could log on through their student email and their student password, and they just took a 55-question survey that gave them immediate feedback. So I'm not gonna read through all the questions, but they're just simple questions, and it just you could answer it never, rarely, occasionally, frequently, and very frequently. And we noticed that our students took about seven to 10 minutes to take this assessment. This was a voluntary assessment, no one needed, no one had to take this, we posted this on our Google Classroom for our students to take if they wanted to, and we left it open for about a week and a half. So after the students completed the breathless survey, they got immediate feedback in the seven categories that are aligned with Castle. They were ranked from one to five, and you could kinda dig deeper on, if you clicked on, if you load, if you had a low score on like personal responsibility, you could explore your responses and see not only how you scored that way, but what you could do to improve as well. So. We have about 200 high school students, and we had about little less than 40 students participate in this survey. That was really a good sign for us, because we weren't expecting to get about 40 students, so we were happy with that, and we found out that about 47% of our high school students from this survey qualified for having at least one need, or having a need through their score, and about 50% of them scored as typical. If I would click on a student, I would immediately see how they scored on all seven of the Castle-aligned categories. On the left just represents the T-scores that from the Dessa, they calculated that out, and how to figure out where you'd be placed, and then on the bottom are just the seven Castle-aligned categories. So a little bit specific into the data, what's blacked out is the students who participated in in the study, so this is specifically the students who had a need. We noticed that the biggest students in the red was the ones that scored in self-awareness and self-management, they had really low scores. And we thought that that would be a pretty good area to target for our high school students. The next slide is the students who scored in the typical range, so the 50%. But we still thought that self-awareness and self-management were the two lower scores in the typical range, so that was where we were going to do an intervention. So we wanted to make sure that whatever we were going to do, there was research behind it. We found that the Heartfulness website was a resource that was, it was an intervention that was approved from the Castle website. So what they kinda recommended was that we would teach yoga and breathing practices to help our students feel more relaxed and calm during, or to control their self-awareness, or improve it. And so this Heartfulness program, the one problem with it was there was a large fee to participate in it, but there were some studies, or there was some resources on this website that we really liked and that we're going to use. So. To do a research intervention, sometimes you do need some money, and we applied for a peer-to-peer suicide prevention grant. We provide, we applied for it in about early October, and at the end of November, we ended up being awarded this grant, and we were super excited because it was for $1,000. And so we can do some of the interventions that we wanted to, and during our proposal, we our proposal for the DPI website, we talked about we wanted to purchase a yoga therapist who is licensed, who can teach online. Sarah Stone found this person, she knew this person, and we're actually going to be offering yoga next week, every Tuesday for about half an hour for our students to participate in and improve their self-awareness. We also, we also put in our proposal that we wanted to give, teach lessons, and provide small groups for our students to connect with others. So this is kind of our brochure that we are gonna send out, and we've been kinda marketing to our families and options. We're offering free service for yoga on Tuesdays, starting at 11 o'clock. The purpose behind this was to was to, well, we noticed that in our survey that we offered to our students in trimester one, it showed about 47% of our students had a low self-management, self-awareness skills, and this is our way to improve it. This is a video, it, I can share the link, we don't necessarily need to watch it now, it's just an advocacy video that we be, we sent out to our families and students about it, but we don't need to watch it now. And so besides offering yoga, we understand that not all students might not want to do yoga, and so we offered other ways for students to improve their self-awareness. The one thing about Options is we don't have like a homeroom or a scheduled time where all of our student body connects, and we can have our staff go over specific topics. So we created this wellness badge activities for students to participate in, and so once a week, I post a wellness badge opportunity for students on our Google Classroom page. And usually the badge has to do something with, or the activity has to do something with exploring career or SEL. And our data provides us a little bit more guidance on what we should be sending out to our students. But like I said, we don't have a homeroom, we don't get to teach these lessons, so what we did is we incentivized our wellness badge activities, where I post one once a week, and if students do it by the end of the week, they get an opportunity to earn this badge. And the badge will replace anywhere between 10 to 20 points of a score on their Apex Learning grade, so. And then lastly, this is something that we're actually starting tomorrow, we're super excited about, it's our win. Students just sign up for this, and I just lead a 30-minute sort of group where we check in, we can do a small activity, and it really just provides our online students to connect and meet other students in our in our school, because we've had a lot of students and parents really asking for this, so we're really excited to do this as well. So just to summarize, kinda our goal is to improve the wellness of our students by providing multiple services, yoga, wellness badges, and win. And that's it, so I just want to say thank you again for giving me this opportunity to speak, I'm more than happy to answer any questions if you'd like.
I have a question. When you said you provided yoga before, do you get a pretty good mix of students, or is it pretty much like females, or?
You may have misheard me, so we have not started the yoga, the yoga actually starts next week.
Okay, I thought you had it in the first trimester or something, so. So do you have kids signing up, or do they just show up whenever it's the time?
So we've created a Google Classroom for each of our high school grades, and I post on there, and students can sign up, and we also kind of market it to our students at our study sessions as well.
So right now, you don't know how many are coming, or you do?
As of right now, we don't, we have about somewhere between, I think, five to 10 students possibly signed up, but it starts next week, Tuesday, so we have about a week to market to our students.
Thank you, thank you Chandler. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Approval of our minutes. Regular session minutes, pass to your agenda. Pass out to those of you who are just here. Any questions, comments, concerns? Otherwise, looking for a motion to do the regular session.
I'll move to approve the minutes, December 14th, 2020, regular session, school board meeting as presented.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
I'm moving to second it to approve the minutes of the December 14th, 2020, regular session, school board meeting as presented. Roll call, please.
This is Fisher.
Yes.
Mr. Gayhart.
Yes.
Mrs. Ingersoll.
Yes.
Mr. Martel.
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell.
Yes.
Mrs. Ray.
Yes.
Mr. Scaro.
Yes.
Ms. Gropowski.
Yes.
Carry, now looking for a motion for a close session.
I'll move to approve the minutes, December 14th, 2020, close session, school board meeting as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
We moved the second to approve the minutes of the December 14th, 2020, close session, school board meeting as presented.
Mrs. Fisher.
Yeah.
Mr. Gayhart.
Yes.
Mrs. Ingersoll.
Yes.
Mr. Martel.
I'm standing.
Let's see, Mr. O'Donnell.
Yes.
Mrs. Ray.
Yes.
Mr. Scaro.
Yes.
And Ms. Gropowski.
I see.
General and other fund bills. The general and other fund bills this evening, numbers checks number 141 681 through 141901, wire transfers 556, 561, 576, 610, and 610 to 624, ACH check numbers 179 to 215, option renovation, wire numbers 577, 578, and then one voided check, 141645. Combined amount of $1,535,724. Might have noticed there's actually two runs within your board packet, without the second meeting in December, we did a run for the end of December, and then a second one here.
Questions for Mr. Truman? You're done, looking for a motion?
I move to approve the general and other fund bills of January 11th, 2021. Check numbers 141681 to 141901, wire numbers 556 to 561, 576, 610 to 624. ACH check numbers 179 to 215, options renovation, wire numbers 577 to 578, and voided check number 141645. In the combined amount of $1,535,724.50 as presented.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Alright, it's been moved to second to approve the general and other fund bills, January 11th, 2021, checks numbered 141681 to 141901, wire numbers 556 to 561, 576 610 to 624, ACH check numbers 179 to 215, options renovation, wire numbers 577 to 578, and voided check numbers 141645, combined amount of $1,535,724.50 as presented. Roll call.
Mrs. Fisher.
Yes.
Mr. Gayhart.
Yes.
Mrs. Ingersoll.
Yes.
Mr. Martel.
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell.
Yes.
Mrs. Ray.
Yes.
Mr. Scaro.
Yes.
Ms. Gropowski.
Yes.
Carry. Open enrollment spaces.
Each year, we are required by state statute to identify how many spaces that we have available for open enrollment, if we plan to put any caps on the overall enrollment spaces. Per board policy, the maximum class sizes for all non-special ed programming is listed as follows, kindergarten 25, grades one through three 25, grade four through five 30, and secondary level 32. With those numbers taken into consideration, this is the current list of the number of sections that we have, and each of those grade levels, the number of total students in all of those grade levels, and the average students per class across the school district. And then these seats available, that would be available accordingly, as such, you can see that we have, we're well below that threshold. We're at, last year, we actually gained more than we I think got anticipated or planned for, I think the net was just over 100, is that accurate?
Yep.
We're at a point now within our classes, we have so many open enrollment students that we turn over either through graduation and/or just changes in choices, that we were to the point where to get a net 100, we almost need to have 200 and we go enroll, we turn over close to 100 students on a year's basis. So. That's where we're at, as far as the motion goes, let me pull down. These are the different special education numbers. We track and monitor those, special educations, a little bit different in that there are some avenues that, you know, if we have a student, the open enrollment reimbursement dollar amount is much higher, it's about $4,000 per pupil, higher than a regular education student. Also, if their costs exceed that dollar amount, the 12,000, then we can go back to the school district, the differential is small. So there's not as much of a fiscal risk within the special ed on the open enrollment. But at this time, we are not recommending any we have the board notes, any caps on the open enrollment numbers, with the exception of the fact that special education students need to qualify for programs that are already established, meaning that we're not going to create one that's even for an open enrollment student.
Jason, you mentioned a turnover of about 100 students, does that include
Yes, that'd be just.
Okay. And out of that, how many of, how many of those are option students versus traditional?
I think last year, we graduated about 40 students out of our senior class that would open enroll then. Plus, then we graduated about, that's from our traditional brick-and-mortar building, about 40 of the 250 roughly were open enroll. And options graduated another 20 plus. Tricia, do you recall your graduating class last year, is it?
I, 19, I believe.
So you add those together, that's about 60 of them, and then the 40 are general shifting about.
Okay.
Traditionally, the virtual school has a little bit more, and that would hold true throughout the entire state, more influx with in and out.
Are we seeing much attrition in options school at all, or are kids who are enrolling in that thing in that, or are they trying it out?
I'll touch on that a little bit in my presentation in a couple minutes.
Okay, great.
Yeah, I won't steal your thunder, Tricia, we'll.
Thank you.
I expected more attrition this year with the massive growth that they experienced due to COVID.
Right.
But they started the year just over 600, and at the media point, they were just over 600. We did not see, there's some again shifting, but net-wise, they stayed pretty stable on the total enrollment. Which I think, again, that does still Tricia's honor, but I think it's kudos to them, I think it's representative of how happy the families, all those new families that shifted that format.
Yeah, yeah. I'll look forward to that.
Are questions on open enrollment?
I move to place no caps on open enrollment spaces for regular education students in all grade levels, and for special education students who qualify for programs already established within the district for the 2021 slash 22 school year.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's removed this second to place no caps on open enrollment spaces for regular education students in all grade levels, and for special education students who qualify for programs already established within the district for the 2021, 2022 school year. Roll call.
Mrs. Fisher.
Yes.
Mr. Gayhart.
Yes.
Mrs. Ingersoll.
Yes.
Mr. Martel.
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell.
Yes.
Mrs. Ray.
Yes.
Mr. Scaro.
Yes.
Ms. Gropowski.
Yes.
Motion carry.
I just want to add one more item of note, I know Mr. Truman's syndrome is budget planning documents to the administrative team, and I think in the chart, I noticed on the revenue charts, we've now exceeded 10% of our total revenue is through open enrollment.
Wow, wow.
So. Yeah, it's a significant portion, it enables us to keep the programming in place for our students and our staff.
Yes.
Court discussion item, student report.
Did you not take, you know, come to the meet?
Toby, are you in the Google Meet?
Yeah, it looks like you are.
I actually just joined, yeah.
Are you saying Toby has the report?
Yeah.
All right, we'll turn the, let me, I'm gonna stop presenting Toby and we'll turn it over to you. All right, go ahead, Toby.
All right, let's do my Chromebook one moment to lood. So, at the high school, uh tomorrow night, there's gonna be a free virtual seminar about parenting uh during the times of like COVID uh from eight to ten PM. And I believe it's going to be ver- yeah, it's virtual. Uh, the Elkhorn Resilience Coalition and Walworth County Human Services are having a discussion about suicide awareness on January twentieth at six PM at the James A. Weiner Auditorium. Also, fun fact, that will be on my birthday. Uh, the First Skills USA Teamwork Competition Practice uh happened today after school, and they're getting ready for that competition. And the Mr. Elk Competition will be on Monday, the eighteenth at seven PM. At the mil- at the middle school, students can now redeem their PBIS tickets for prizes. The archery club is continuing to run letters, or is continuing to run, and they send letters home to students to promote the club. They just created an an otaku club for anime fans. And apparently, they're gonna meet every Thursday to watch anime in the art room after school. Uh, there's going to be an essentials drive from the eleventh through the twenty second for like toothpaste, soap, deodorant, and things like that at Jackson Elementary School. They're gonna be having their school portrait retakes on the fourteenth. Mrs. Brown's kindergarten class spent the last half hour of school on the eighth playing outside in the snow. The school is selling craft kits to help kids keep busy over our upcoming days off of school. Uh, they can choose between making a clothespin snowflake, a birdseed ornament, or a string heart, and they're five dollars each. At Westside Elementary, there's gonna be their virtual PTA meeting tomorrow at five thirty. And their Pick My Kid applications begin tonight. And Ms. Butters and the PTA released a Westside Holiday Cookbook using the family's receipts from Piggly Wiggly to create recipes. At Tibbetts Elementary, the fourth grade students built their snow tunnels outside. The fifth graders finished up on making their plaster mask sculptures and are adding the finishing touches. And last Friday was their avid college wear day. I think it just means that they were to wear college gear to school. And that is all I have.
Thank you. Thank you. Any questions for Toby?
Yeah, what's Pick Your Kids?
Pick My Kid is a application that we have to assist with parents picking up the kids from school. So, they download an app for those parents who pick their kids up for school or any parent. And as they pull into the parking lot, there's a sign that says, you know, at this point, go ahead and, you know, stop and you indicate that you're there.
Okay.
And then in the classrooms up on their computer screens, it lights up Johnny, parents here, so they go down.
You see my call? Sort of like, this is it, and then when I get to pick up Elliot, then I just tell, it just hit announce or whatever down there. And then I just send the data.
Okay.
So then, yeah, and before we had like, with COVID, you know, in the past, we'd just congregate all the kids at the gate.
Right.
Here you guys go. And then with COVID, we couldn't congregate them all, so they would have multiple people with radios and all ways. And we came across this at the beginning of the school year. We're just at the point with everything else going on.
Yeah, right.
To get this one out. So it gives them more secure exchange. We know that the parents queued in. The kid, they can keep working, doing their stuff. They see their name on the screen, and they get relieved. So for COVID, that's good. And also, like, my kids ride the bus most of the time, but I have the app, so I can pick up and I can change them right there on the app on bus riders to pick up. I could delegate, oh, Grandma's picking him up today. I can put that note in there and.
Oh, right, that's awesome.
Cause he's got it on his pad. That's what he knows. Cause I heard him say, Elliot, it's your dad today. Cause he's looking for.
And then we have, um, someone stands, there's, someone should be standing at the sign for those who don't have a smartphone.
Uh huh.
And they have an iPad or on their phone, they can have the app, and they enter for the students. And then when the kid gets in the car, they check up, so we have a timestamp of when they
Okay.
were picked up and by whom.
Okay, so this is actually really.
Animal and android?
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, we're gonna continue using, are we gonna continue using it even after?
Well, they kind of make sense. It's not this big model.
Yeah, well, I like, I like the secure, yeah, the security aspect of it.
Yeah, it was uh developed by a computer programmer who, yeah, picking his kid up from school, and they picked him up, got a couple blocks down the road, asked him, how was school today? And he didn't recognize the voice in the backseat. There was some other kid that they loaded into his car. So he thought, oh, there's gotta be a better way to handle this. So, yeah, he made the that app. So it's um, yeah, it has a lot of robust features. It can even handle the busing, where we don't plan on introducing that, at least not yet. But down the road, you could have it where they're also getting checked in on on buses and so forth, so. Yeah, I think it's, it helps us with our COVID uh component and streamlines that, but we also, it adds security, so we'll just have that.
That's, that's really cool. I like that.
Well, it's really easy.
Good.
Did you use it or your wife used it?
Yeah, I've used it. She uses her daddy's.
Oh, okay. So it's been going on?
Yeah.
Good. All right. On the West Side, they just launched this week, and I think uh Jackson must have just launched.
I know, I'm like.
Yeah, Pick My Kids.
Anyway.
Character report. All right. Tricia, I'm gonna turn it over to you. Just let me know you want me to advance.
Okay.
Presentation on. Can you see that all right?
Uh, not yet, but.
Although I always forget that on this computer, I have to. Okay. Okay.
Well, good evening, everyone, and it's okay, Toby, that you didn't ask what was happening in options because I have a great status update for everyone tonight. Tonight, I just want to share all the exciting things that have been happening over at Options Virtual Charter School in the last several months. And twenty twenty brought some disruptions to education to everyone. And although Options has existed in our district as a virtual school since two thousand fourteen, we were not spared from the challenges that COVID brought either. I think a lot of people thought, well, you're a virtual school, this will, you know, we would have a smooth transition to this. Fortunately, we've spent the last five years creating systems for growth and sustainability within Options. And we were almost to the point where we stopped saying the phrase, we're building the plane as we fly it. And we started to exhale a little bit. But this quote is a reminder that we have to stay flexible, and we have to be ready to adapt at any time because those systems that we had created couldn't handle the pandemic-sized growth that we experienced. Because we quickly had to pivot, and we had to get creative and in order to bring on four hundred new-to-options students in October, uh in August and September. So, next slide, please. So, with disruptions also come challenges, but those challenges can create opportunities for us. And most of the rest of this presentation, we'll just be touching on um some of the challenges, but also the opportunities for growth that happened in ways that we didn't know existed. So I'll give you an overall status update on where we're at with location, enrollment, staffing, and programming, and touch on how some challenges created opportunities for new ways of doing things. So, location, where are we at literally? I mean, some people, uh, we're a virtual school, but we have a location, but right until today, we were at a temporary location. So here's just a little timeline of um where where things have been. So, uh, in April, we passed that referendum and began that process of making plans for the renovation. Then we moved out of the school at the beginning of August to a temporary location, which was the former Health and Human Services building. And prior to that, uh, so it was the county building. Now it's owned by Aurora. And the timing of this is significant because it was a big move for us at just about the same time as the reopening plans for the district were shared with families. So that brought a huge influx of students um to us right at the same time we were trying to make an office building, work as a school. So, that was, that was challenging, and I I kind of equate that to being a mom-and-pop grocery store and needing to function as a Costco overnight. That's how it felt. So that was, that was kind of tough. But we are happy to report that as of today, we started moving items into classrooms. It's a big job that still has to be done. And uh, we made a dent today, so that process has been started. We will start seeing students in person February second. So right now, it's just kind of the move. I put this picture up here because we, at our temporary building, we had to create three classrooms out of a huge corridor. And we, we had to get creative, and we think our schedule, we ended up doing an open concept with hanging uh banners from the ceiling to divide the classrooms, and it actually worked out really well. And we simplified a lot of things to um to create a better system for us. And the way we simplified our schedule was we created uh it into a half-day, so that allowed us to have accommodate more students. But the simplification allowed us to move some staff into the middle school area where we were doing now middle school study sessions. So it really, overall, it worked out very well, and and we're very happy with it. So, for enrollment, back in May, we had, in May twenty twenty, we had about two hundred and twenty students. And so you can see by the chart, the totals at the bottom, by between June and September, we really, mostly the month of August, we added four hundred students nearly to to that. I've kind of broken it down here so you can see where those students fall. Um, and, you know, enrollment in virtual school is notoriously fluid, pandemic or not. We, we see students coming in and out of programs all throughout the year, in and out of other virtual schools, in and out of brick and mortar, to us and back. Circumstances change for families. It's not always that they're unhappy with their program at all. Sometimes things just have to go in a different direction for them, and we understand that. Uh, but I, Jason mentioned this before. I, I think you can see that overall, we're really staying pretty close to to what we had in in August and September. As a matter of fact, we're still, we, we lose a few, we gain a few. A lot of those are new open enrolled students as well. Uh, with that enrollment, we had to kind of restructure the leadership and make sure that we were uh taking care of new students and families and helping lead our staff. So, uh, we had a new influx of sixth through eighth graders online. So we divided that to where Sarah Stone was taking sixth through twelve new families. And I, I'm handling the four K through eight. Uh, some of those sixth through eighth graders are still in our book-based type of curriculum, that paper pencil type, and they're not online. So, uh, those still stay over over on this site. And that was a great fit. So that mass enrollment required us to really streamline our enrollment process. And I'm gonna tell you, this was probably one of the, the hardest, but yet best things that happened to Options this summer. And we've always been so proud of our program because we have such a personalized approach with our families, and we spend a lot of time building relationships with them. And it was really hard to let a lot of that go um and and do some of this mass enrollment. Uh, but we, we came out of it finding much more efficient ways of providing that initial information to families. And then we realized that once we provided that initial information, that connection still takes place with our students and families, but often comes more so with the teacher on record. So we're still building relationships. We're still giving personalized attention to families. Uh, but it's not always on the onboarding process that sometimes needs to be a little bit more brief, and and I think we managed that very well. Uh, with all those new enrollments, we had to add some staff. And we are so appreciative of the support of the district in shifting staff over to Options and even hiring some new to the district staff as well. Uh, with so many new families and so many eyes on Options, and so many families putting faith in us for the first time, we really had to provide a quality experience. We could not fail. Um, and this team of Options teachers, uh, unbelievable. They really rose to the challenge, and uh, I think we've done a very nice job. Uh, and that's on top of learning new curriculum. There, we, we had to add a whole new K-five online curriculum, which is something that we've never had before, and it was a big undertaking. So, you know, through all of that, oh, and Chromebooks being on backorder all around the world. Uh, you know, we're a virtual school, so that was, we, we had some, some tough days, but I really appreciate the, the staff and teachers in Options because we made it work. And we, we often, our, our catchphrase is teamwork makes the dream work. We say it all the time, and and it's really true. One key hire, I have to say, um, is will be our tech support person, our computer specialist, Will Uber. Uh, we really needed that. And um, you know, we have six hundred students nearly with with Chromebooks, and we really needed someone to take that on. So we're really happy that he's joining us, happy that all of our new staff are joining us. And I, I have here, here's some examples of the positive outcomes that have resulted because of this disruption that occurred in in education. And we will continue to pivot and adapt and plan for what the future may bring. This disruption in education, I feel really normalized doing school in different ways. And so I, I really think that we will just only continue to grow. Thank you. Any questions?
I, I just have one question. I was to go back to slide six. I was just curious, the main enrollment in twenty twenty, you have two hundred and twenty children. What, approximately, where, where did they all land? Were they mainly in the younger grades, or was it similar to the spread that you're?
We were, we were nearing um we were more heavy on the K-eight. Our high school was, was approaching a hundred though, so we were getting to be about fifty fifty.
Okay.
Fifty fifty between K-eight and nine twelve.
Yes, yes.
We're heavier on six twelve.
Okay, thank you.
Um, Tricia, uh, what's up here? How many students are we servicing for Williams Bay?
Um, we have about forty in the K-five online. Sarah. Sarah, how many do you have?
At this time, they've all returned to their district.
Okay. So that's part of the progress. Paula, you're still servicing about 40?
Yep, but we're just providing their online curriculum service. And they have a teacher that is...
They're not included in this number?
No, no, they're not included.
So we have, with the 6603 agreement with Williams Bay, we're servicing about 40 K-5 students. And you said they provide a teacher to oversee that?
Yes, we provide the curriculum.
Any other questions? I think when we made the decision to go ahead and start the construction and get that fast track down, I don't think we realized we'd have 600 students there. I still remember when we were calculating the amount of time for those one-on-one conferences, which were really at the heart and center. I think we figured, well, wait, you know, 400 hours, that's going to be a 10-week delay just to do the meetings. And that's if they fit within a perfect hour and you did nothing else.
And sometimes we would meet with them multiple times in that process. So this is much more efficient, and we will do that this way moving forward.
Well, kudos and very good work. And thank you for all the pivoting and the work that you guys did this year.
Well, thank you for the support. It wouldn't have happened without it.
Speaking of options, options renovation.
Yeah, so let me go ahead and share some updates with you. I, Tricia gave you a lot, so I won't spend a lot of time. But there's images here that you can start to see. We've got, the cap is on, the outside. We're still waiting for panels on, or these windows to come in, in the center there. A little difficult to see that from there, but I think this gives you a little bit better idea. This used to be the teal-colored panels up top. Sorry if you like that color. The interior, I have to compliment Tricia and her team. They did a great job with the color schemes and the flooring. She did a wonderful job picking colors that look nice, but will also hide a lot of the wear and the tear. The classrooms, most of them have carpet tile. Those that don't have a vinyl tile finish, which almost looks like a terrazzo or a hot terrazzo, but it has a really durable finishing. So that's very nice, a luxury vinyl tile. The bathrooms have the epoxy floor. They're getting finished. They look nice. I think they did a nice job of incorporating some nice bright colors that are brain-based science, you know, good for the mind stimulation and positivity as well throughout the different rooms. This is the main entryway when you go in. They're getting there on the front of their wall. Front lobby, ceiling tiles are getting in. Really makes it amazing what, how it starts to pop when you have the ceiling tiles.
And the lockers.
The locker's painted. This is the new floor. It almost, also kind of almost looks like a stained concrete finish in a way. Yeah, I was very pleased with the flooring, plus with that. They still have the wood trim to paint and get freshened up, but it's going to be a similar color tone to that. And we were able to keep all these, the windows in, which give the additional lighting from the hallway. Anything else you want to add to that? I think that gives you some good work. Your gym will be the latter area finished because it's full of everything. We're, I'm excited about how the gym's going to finish out. They'll have a horizontal climbing wall along one of the walls. We pulled off all the old covering. They'll get a new covering on that. It'll be painted, and the ceiling tiles will be painted as well.
There's not that much, though, to do in there because the floor is probably okay.
Oh, the floor is going to get stained down. It was okay before. The stage is staying.
Okay, okay.
I don't recall, did we, we didn't get, did we get curtains for the stage? I don't think we got house for the stage. We have to...
Yeah, that's fun. That can be a fundraiser or something.
No, but it looks great. The cabinetry that Tricia picked looks great as well. It has like a great oak laminate or fake finish. And the light countertops. Yeah, and they still have like these boards to paint or replace the footboards. There's a few things that they have to get done yet, but it's looking really good.
I'm sure the neighborhood will like it. I can't, what are you going to do? Yeah, I mean, too.
Yeah, and it'll look and feel in many aspects like a new building. Great. All right. Any other questions on the renovation? All right, we have our conference. It feels weird because the conference is online this year.
Yeah.
Now it's supposed to be really nice weather. So every year, they have the official notice of delegate assembly. That's here. They also have a number of items, you know, the agenda, and a number of items that are put forward for the group to discuss and vote on. And Sharon, I don't know, Barbara, do you want to add anything to that? Or...
No, I just, we were kind of talking a little bit, a couple of us, before we started. And some of these are just reiteration of what we had in the past or the same thing, but a twist on it because of COVID. And the things that I think might get a lot more discussion on typically don't because it's the things that's like, seriously? So I guess just, you know, if there's something that you really feel passionate about in any of these.
Yep, and then basically what this does is this sets their lobbying agenda, for lack of a better term, that their lobbyists and, you know, organization will then ask the legislators to consider. And once in a while, they consider something. I hate to sound pessimistic, but I've almost found it. And I know this is frustrating to WASB because they brought it, John Forrester has brought it up, that, hey, quit, you know, try to work through our WASB lobbying efforts rather than going to your legislature.
Yeah.
But to be frank, it's...
It works.
Seems to get results working through your own legislature.
Sure.
Getting that to sponsor a bill.
Yeah.
All right. Other questions on that? I'll give an update on the rule status. Knock on wood. We're heading in the second week after the holiday break.
I know, the numbers are great.
It's looking pretty good right now. I was a little worried about were we going to have a lot of kids coming down to the office sick last week and forth, and we didn't. So I think this is positive. We're either getting to a point where there's been a good percentage of populations already had it and sick, or people are following guidelines, or we're just lucky. But at the county level, the infection rate has dropped. Last I looked, it was around 200 per week after the flu. On their receipt, that was upward of 10%.
But our deaths have been increasing.
Yeah.
Greatly, that's, I watch that. I get that report every other day and...
They say they always lag about a month behind. Your, I think the deaths spike up about a month after your infection rates spike. This is... Our trend, I would say that some of this was, you know, down here was just because we were out during break and didn't have the reports. That's why we had a little dip up, but you can see it's getting down. So hopefully, we'll get back down into the ranges where we were at the beginning of the year. That's much more manageable, and we feel a lot safer on that. I would add that at the national level over the break, and I haven't seen a lot of them from the superintendent's organization yet, but there's been a lot of calls from superintendents. And I plan, we have a meeting with our county health department this next week, and I'd like to ask them as well. The superintendent's calling for the CDC and health departments to reassess their quarantine guidelines. In particular, in the school setting, when someone who tests positive was wearing a face covering, and if the other students were wearing a face covering, that they shouldn't need to get quarantined unless they had a significant direct exposure. But what we're finding, and it's not just us, it's all schools in our area, it's all the schools throughout the country, is that when the face coverings are being used and the mitigation is being utilized, it's working and you're not getting transference from the students in the school setting. So it's a number, and this isn't politicized at all. It's just superintendents asking the health departments, look at the data. You've got enough research to see that risk is lower. Do we really need to put a kid on quarantine for two weeks? Miss two weeks at school? And for some kids, they're looking at their second, third, even upwards of fourth time being quarantined. And that's very detrimental. Feeling is how ways that potential risk is spread where the schools are following this combination. The pediatricians association originally, they came out and, you know, if you remember, their original recommendation was a three-feet zone with face coverings. Well, if we had a three-feet zone with face coverings, they would probably knock out 90% of the kids who have been quarantined in the school setting. Doesn't knock it out for those who have been quarantined from outside of school, but it would knock out the vast majority. And to this point, we've had probably several hundred kids that have been quarantined due to school exposure. And we have one, possibly two instances where the individual had contracted it. You know, there was no other known exposure. So it's well below 1%. So I just wanted to make you aware of that and the rest of that. We'll bring it up with the health department. But it is something that we would need them to sign off on or hold on for to sign up on. And I don't know if our health department would do it without CDC doing it. So then again, I know my sister's school in Texas, that's the process they follow. They don't quarantine the kids if they're wearing face coverings unless there's significant direct contact. Still follow that practice, but their health department allows it. We're going to, I kind of advocate for that based on... That's, I think... Well, then we have the first reading of the complaints. This policy, we just wanted to update this to incorporate, most complaints now come in electronic form. So we also want to change the language to encompass, you know, the rest of our policies where we're using the pronoun "they." Let me pull this up. We struck this line, no church against any employee, et cetera, because it's covered down here on the procedures for handling complaints about school personnel. That we included either via hard copy or email. And then we struck the term immediately provided to the employee. It's not, we want, we're going to provide it to the employee, but we felt like immediately is kind of like, they give it to me within five minutes of receiving it. Or, yeah, so... Yeah. Yeah, there's instances where, yeah. We did strike the have a right to be represented by the education association means conflict. There isn't, that education association doesn't exist anymore, but we do extend to all employees that they can always have a representative of their choice. From time to time, we do have employees that still pay dues to, is it still called, is it not called, do you know?
I don't know what they're called anymore.
Yeah, but we do, over the years, we've had a couple of employees who, because they pay their dues to the larger organization, they'll still send a representative down. All right. Any questions on that? All right, recommendations personnel. Okay, personnel sheet's relatively small today. We want to thank Robert Fado for serving as the baseball coach and wish him well. And then we have the appointment of Jaclyn Quist as a high school custodian and Brenda Sanchez as a Jackson custodian.
Questions for Mr. Chadlock?
I move to approve the personal recommendation sheet of January 11, 2021, putting new employment contracts, conditions on passing the background check, and district mandated drug screening as presented.
To move the second to approve the personal recommendation sheet for January 11, 2021, putting new employment contracts, conditions on passing the background check, and district mandated drug screening as presented.
This is Fisher.
Yes.
Mr. Gaynor?
Yes.
This is Ingersoll.
Yes.
Mr. Martel?
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Mrs. Ray?
Yes.
Mr. Scarra?
Yes.
Mr. Kowski?
Yes.
I've got a lot of school gifts to present this evening. First, Cricket Wireless. Elkhorn has donated school supplies valued at $200. The Holton Foundation has donated $4,000 to the instrumental music programs to be used as the district sees fit. The Tibbetts Elementary PTA has donated $1,020 to the Tibbetts Art Department. Nancy and Randy Phelan have donated $1,500 to Tibbetts Elementary School. The Jackson Elementary PTA has donated a iPad valued at $299. Dave and Chris Welch donated a piano to Options valued at $200. St. John's and the Wilderness Church has donated $100 to the high school baseball program for their help moving Christmas trees. Anonymous donors donated $5,000 to the high school baseball program. An anonymous donator donated ten Awuga snowman kits to be distributed amongst the elementary schools valued at $100. Todd and Kim Heritage have donated 800 pieces of lumber to the middle school valued at $3,535. And Kevin Monty has donated $1,000 to Tibbetts Elementary to the use of the discretion of Mr. Franz. I want to thank all of those individuals and organizations for their generous donation.
I, I, yeah. So moved, it's almost $17,000. I assume it's...
Has been moved the second to approve the generous case of Cricket Wireless, the Holton Band Foundation, not Holton Foundation, the Tibbetts Elementary PTA, Nancy and Randy Phelan, the Jackson Elementary PTA, Dave and Chris Wells, St. John's and the Wilderness Church, a couple anonymous donors, Todd and Kim Heritage, and Kevin Monty.
This is Fisher.
Yeah.
This is, or Mr. Gaynor? This is Ingersoll?
Yes.
Mr. Martel?
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Mrs. Ray?
Yes.
Mr. Scarra?
Yes.
Mrs. Kowski?
Yes.
Mr. Reed?
Yes.
I'm sorry, Mr. Reed, I missed you on the one before. All right, I have a few announcements for you this evening. The school law conference will be held in a virtual format this year on Wednesday, February 24. We plan to do a group registration, which allows 10 participants to attend. Please let Jody know if you'd like to attend. That's the one that generally is... That's the one that generally is held in the fall at the Alliance. Put on my boardman's card, they do a nice job with that. The Friends Awards will be held on, uh, next Monday, January 25th. We're going to hold that in the auditorium so that we have more space to space out. Uh, that will start at 6 o'clock. After the ceremony, we'll head to the district office for the board meeting. So if anyone asks, it'll be well below the 25% threshold there. And, um, yeah, we'll be able to do that presentation. Uh, we did receive notice, uh, we want to, you know, thank Lake Geneva School District for the past, oh, 20-plus, right, 20 years for their participation in the Walworth County Education Consortium Alternative High School. They did send us notice this year that the 2020, 2021 must fully, will be their last academic year, um, as a consortium member in that. And, um, due to needs, with budgetary needs and so forth within their district, they're going to study more of that in-house. So we want to thank them for being a part of that, and we'll continue to enjoy servicing the students from Lake Geneva, the all-in-all. That's all.
I'll second it.
All right, please continue to adjourn, roll bubble. Oh, whoa. Sorry, my mic dropped. So, yeah. Motion, who seconded that?
Well, Barb made the motion, I seconded.
All right, Barb, Mrs. Fisher?
Yeah.
Mr. Gaynor?
Yeah.
Mrs. Ingersoll?
Yes.
Mr. Martel?
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Mrs. Ray?
Yes.
Mr. Scarrow?
Yes.
Mrs. Kowski?
Yes.
Mr. Reed?